So how do we get it to turn green?
Yeah, that's good. We're red.
Oh, red's okay. This is the Morgantown City Council regular meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street, second floor. It's Tuesday, June 6, 2023, and it's 25 minutes after 7:00 p.m. We're calling this meeting to order. Then we are now at this time going to have a moment of silence for Morgantown Police Officer, First Class Zane Breakiron. May be seated. Our thoughts are with Zane Breakiron's friends and family and fellow officers and citizens. And we'd like to ask Chief Powell to please step forward and say a few words.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate it. So I don't know if any of you have ever had a chance to interact with Officer Breakiron. Today, ironically enough, would have been his seven-year anniversary. June 6, 2016 was when he was hired with the department. And I can tell you unequivocally that he probably was an officer that is the epitome of what a police officer should be. Throughout his career, from the time he started, he possessed all the qualities that are vital to being a good officer. Not only that, just a good person. And that's the key, really. When we talk about Zane, I prefer to think of him more on a personal level. I've never been around too many people in my lifetime where just being in their presence, you felt good after you were in his presence. He had a... I always... The first thing I always think about when I think of him is a smile. He had this contagious smile from ear to ear, and he was rarely seen without a smile on his face. And that sort of encapsulates his entire persona and the way he went about his daily life and his job as a police officer. He had a genuine empathy, and he cared about the people he was serving. And he was... Just lived his life the way you would want a police officer or anyone, actually, to live their life. So it hits our department very hard. We've obviously, for the last several days, have been mourning his loss, making sure that the family has what they need. And I just... Beyond that, I just wanted some of you that may not have known him to know the quality of person he was. And the loss is staggering for us. Thank you.
Now we'll continue with our meeting. If there could please call the other one. Joe Buganam?
Present.
Bill Kowacki?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshberger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here.
Now we're going to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're going to approve several sets of minutes. We have minutes from May 1, 2023, canvassing meeting minutes; May 2, 2023, regular meeting minutes. canvassing meeting minutes, May 2, 2023, regular meeting minutes, May 16, 2023, regular meeting minutes, May 30, 2023, special meeting minutes, May 30, 2023, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Counsel's pleasure. We would approve these as written. Is that?
I'm too.
Yes? Okay.
Sure.
Proclamation. And now we have, under correspondence, we have an unusual, unusual number of minutes that are on, through no fault of our own necessarily, that are on different dates this, this summer. And so we often do not have a June Committee of the Whole Meeting on Election Years, and we are doing that again this year. We have, because of different holidays, we have different sets of meetings. So I'm just going to read through them. Remind, so reminders about upcoming council meeting dates. City Council meeting Wednesday, June 21, 2023. No June Committee of the Whole Meeting. City Council meeting on Wednesday, July 5, 2023. Another regular City Council meeting on Wednesday, July 19, 2023. And then the Committee of the Whole is, as usual, on a Tuesday, July 25, 2023. And then there will be, there will not be an August 1, 2023, regular City Council meeting because that is a municipal, the state municipal league meeting is meeting on that date. And through that week. So what we are doing is we're having regular City Council meetings on Tuesday, August 15, 2023. And another regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, August 23, 2023. That will be a regular meeting, and it'll be a regular meeting instead of a Committee of the Whole Meeting. So I didn't know if the city clerk, pardon?
I think you're being asked to talk up.
Oh, sorry. I would be glad to speak up. And I didn't know if the clerk's office or the manager's office had something to say about these meeting changes, or if we're...
I think this is an unusual year.
Yes.
Things just happen to fall at the right time, and it's requiring some major shifts. And but we're trying to, with the work of City Council, trying to maintain a regular meeting schedule so that we can address the issues addressed, related to the city business.
And on meetings where, meeting...
It's hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will try to speak up. On meetings, on meetings where there's not a Committee of the Whole, on months when there's not a Committee of the Whole, we have other options for bringing items to the next month's agenda, such as the second regular meeting of the month. We can add a portion where we're looking at future gender, agenda items. Did anybody, I know one person mentioned a potential conflict for one of these meetings, and we'll have to work around that.
Yeah, I think we will.
We'll, we'll work on around that with the clerk's office.
Excuse me just for a moment. I know it's difficult to hear, but I don't believe we are miked or magnified, or there's a speaker there. You might want to move forward. That's what I was going to suggest.
I'll speak up. You might want to move forward. I'll try to hold my head up.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to work on our next agenda item. It is Pride Month proclamation. LGBTQIA. And we have a lovely, a lovely proclamation. Ash Orr and...
You are perfectly good at this work. The City of Morgantown strives to be a welcoming and inclusive city and is dedicated to social justice and to the protection of the freedom and equality of all persons regardless of race, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, color, ancestry, age, abilities, blindness, economic, family, veteran status, or life situation. Whereas Morgantown is strengthened and vitalized by the diversity provided by the LGBTQ plus communities civically, economically, culturally, academically, and advocacy for human rights. And whereas we as a nation have often been ambivalent to embracing justice and equality for all, we as a community are proud of our continued progress in protecting human rights and our growing ability to celebrate diversity in sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas community organizations, including Morgantown Pride and WACP, West Virginia University LGBTQ Plus Center, Project Rainbow, the Community Coalition for Social Justice, the City Human Rights Commission, and members of multiple religious congregations have advocated for civil equality and justice for all, as well as promoted human rights education. And whereas it is essential that all youth in this community feel safe, supported, and acceptable to their peers, mentors, and community leaders regardless of their sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas the City of Morgantown adopted an anti-bullying ordinance to prohibit bullying, harassment, intimidation of all youth serving city services, activities, programs, and facilities, and has also adopted a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan to strengthen the diversity in its own workforce. And whereas nationally, the month of June has been designated as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in honor of the Stonewall uprising in 1969, when LGBTQIA+ persons challenged discriminatory criminal laws to affirm their own personhood, their own legitimacy as human individuals, and their own rights to protection under the United States Constitution. Now therefore, I, Jenny Celine, the Mayor of City Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of City Council, do proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll get that frame for us. Thank you.
And then if you have any words that you want to speak, either of you, and...
Yeah, I was going to speak during the public portion as well, but I just had a little small thing. Just say that this Pride Month is incredibly important, and I would like to allow, or, sorry, not allow, I want to tell members of the LGBTQ community to continue to honor your journey as a queer person, especially for those who are unable to safely do so. And we really appreciate seeing Morgantown recognizing this as Pride Month. Thank you.
There we go. Now we have, now we have boards and commissions. So I'm wanting to know who would like to make some appointments. Do you want to just start down here?
Yeah.
So we're going to start with Counsel Butcher.
Sure. I would like to appoint Annie Vernon-Urick to the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Yep. By proclamation? Yep.
Yep.
Proclamation? Yep. All right.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Alexandria Svolos to the Library Board.
Second. Thank you. All right. Proclamation? Yep. Okay. Yep.
I would like to nominate Meredith Ballas to the Bow Park Board.
Second.
All right. Proclamation? All right. And...
Mayor, I have, I have two to nominate. I'd like to nominate Jonathan Cook to the Transit Authority Board.
Second.
Great. Proclamation?
Yes.
And next, I have Blake Caldwell. I'd like to nominate him to the Housing Advisory Commission.
All right. Proclamation?
Second.
Thank you. Proclamation?
Thank you.
All right. And...
I would like to nominate Lindy Jones to the Sister Cities Commission.
Second.
All right. Proclamation?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. We will continue on here. Thank you all. Now we are to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. So we are going to open this public portion. You do not have to be signed up to speak, but we will start with the three individuals who are here. So, how do you say? Okay. Lucien Lued?
Oh, it's... Good evening. My name is Lucian Luen.
Lucia.
And I'm an owner of property on Wall Street. And I was coming up today to speak to you all about the difficulties we're having with the atmosphere, if you want to call it that, in the Wall Street area, not to mention in the other areas of downtown Morgantown. And I was fairly upbeat, and I got a phone call from a gentleman who I showed a, a space on Chancery Row to about a coffee shop, which I thought, gee, would be great, because I'm always looking for a place to get a coffee. When I'm downtown Morgantown, he said, no, I'm, I'm not going to do it. The environment downtown, the people sleeping in doorways, lounging around, is just too much. And so I thought, oh, this isn't the optimism I wanted to come in to Morgantown with. And I went up to Wall Street, walked down to the Monongahill Building and back, and I was propositioned three times for money, panhandling. And that's unusual, I thought. And then later, there were a large number of people lounging around behind Health Right and on Wall Street. And I went up and I asked to see an officer. I actually just went up and just reported at the police station, which I do often, just so everybody knows, you know, how I feel about what's going on. And he walked down with me, very nice gentleman, super guy, and observed what was going on. And I make a specific effort not to direct police officers how to perform their functions. That's not my place. And we did. And he did sort of indicate to a fellow who was kind of sleeping behind a dumpster to move out of there and not to do that. And they did start to move away. And then he got a call and he had to leave. But it was a very nice engagement between us, but it didn't change anything that was there. And that gets to another issue, which I guess maybe we can deal with later on, and that's how the officers perceive what they're supposed to be doing. Anyway, I'm, I wanted to be more optimistic. My, my son's going to make a short statement about his observations. He lives on Wall Street. And so thank you again. I always appreciate your time and the opportunity to say hello.
Thank you, Lucian.
Thank you, Counsel and Mayor. It's just some brief remarks that we prepared regarding Wall Street and the portion on Spruce Street and High. We first like to extend our gratitude to the Morgantown Public Library for enclosing the rear stairwell entrance to the basement of the All House at 351 Spruce Street, which is adjacent to our property. This enclosure of the basement entrance has effectively resolved issues for trespassing litter and conditions, which has attracted rodents. It is a great, a really great improvement. So we really want to extend our gratitude to the library for that. We also want to thank the police. As my dad mentioned, we've worked a lot with the police. The patrolling of the area has been effective and helpful. They have been responsive at times, and, and a greater amount of patrols would always be welcome. We want to also thank the 911 dispatch personnel, who have been very polite, responsive, and kind to us. Lastly, we'd also like to thank the city and the, their ambassadors, which I've encountered frequently, for their efforts to patrol the area and help keep the area and downtown clean, and appealing to the public and the general community. The public health issue of litter, food, trash, and people along Wall Street continues. We would like to bring to the attention of the council one issue that may be, be an easy fix. The, there's a trash receptacle at the end of Wall Street that has a plastic liner that is in a steel receptacle closest to Spruce Street. We've spoken to the city a few times. The rodents seem to be chewing through this plastic liner. And so it's been replaced maybe three or four times. And we think these holes are obviously a source for the rodents. So I think placing a, potentially a metal liner into this receptacle could be an easy fix. Some low-hanging fruit there in terms of finding a solution to, to the rodent issue. We do, the city does need to keep in consideration the impacts of the peoples at times on Wall Street, sitting, lying, sleeping, and of the recent continuous groups of people sitting, lying, sleeping, and camping along the building of Health Right or the former Friendship Room area. These activities are primarily contributing to the rodent problem, not to mention the recent increase in trash accumulating along Wall Street and the parking lot behind Health Right. Of the last, I would say, several weeks, it's just become more evident that the buildup of trash, litter blowing around. But it's, and it's kind of, kind of becoming unmanageable. This unattractive, unsanitary situation on the, on and adjacent to Wall Street impacts the businesses and the tenants, and makes leasing out residential spaces and businesses, business spaces, difficult to say the least, not to mention deterring visitors and shoppers to the area, to the downtown area. It should be noted that there are no trespassing signs in these areas behind Health Right, but there needs to be a way to induce this as the people congregate there consistently, and even more so larger groups after hours and throughout the night. We were informed recently that there are some sewer openings in the area that need to be replaced, that could potentially help prevent some of the rodent issues. Adjacent property owners also need to potentially evaluate openings and spaces that these, that the rodents are multiplying in, and maybe evaluate pest control specialists to help eliminate this, this public health issue. Really, the message today is just a continuing effort to improve, I guess that's my time. I'm almost finished. Really, this is just to improve the appearance and atmosphere of Wall Street and the downtown area in general. We really simply want and desire a vibrant, clean, and safe downtown community. Our last request is really, is just to consider the planting of flowers along the Wall Street Sadie Park Wall. This was a common practice at some time, a few years ago, and it really would help to beautify the area. If the city does not want to do this, for whatever reason, we would ask that if they would provide us permission to allow property owners such as ourselves to plant flowers or some small shrubs to allow, and then put this on the city watering cycle. You know, I, I've tried to make efforts to trim the area, to clean the area, remove trash and debris. And again, we just want a clean, you know, beautiful area for, for the community and for shoppers and residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ash Orr?
Hello. My name is Ash Orr. My pronouns are they, he, and I am a trans West Virginian. And as we just made note of, June starts the month of Pride. And in 2023 alone, over 500 anti-LGBTQ policies have been introduced across the nation. Numerous transition-related healthcare bans have been implemented, directly impacting the trans community and their families. Despite these oppressive laws, societal discrimination, and attacks from extremist lawmakers aiming to strip away our community's access to basic healthcare, the LGBTQ plus community has... the LGBTQ+ community has resisted, inspired others, and broken down barriers. Pride Month is a celebration of its continual forward movement. Pride is a joyful celebration of all the beautiful identities of our community. We create spaces where we can bring our whole selves to declare that we are here, we are visible, and we are proud. But this is also a moment of crisis for our country and for our community. Our lives are quite literally on the line. Too many people, trans folks, Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, those living with HIV and AIDS, people being denied basic care, are facing unprecedented attacks. And still, we are rising up and fighting back, but we really need help from our ally community. Something myself and other members of the LGBTQ+ community are often asked is, what is an ally? And simply put, an ally is a person who wants to fight for the equality of a marginalized group that they are not part of. And it's not always rewarding to be an ally. But with that being said, there was no one way to be a perfect ally. The queer community is diverse and complex, meaning that many, that different members within our community have different needs, priorities, and expectations. Similarly, there is no one right way to handle every situation or interaction with an LGBTQ+ person. Allyship is a journey and not a destination, and I know that every member on this current council is somewhere on that path to allyship. And I would encourage you to continue deepening that journey. One of the easiest ways to be a strong ally to the LGBTQ+ community is to take your education into your own hands. It is vital to have conversations with queer people in your life that encourages trust and solidarity. Allyship is your choice to stand up for what is right and individuals' right to live their life safely and without prejudice. And lastly, we must not forget that the first Pride was a riot and that queer liberation movement was built by Black trans women. At Stonewall, we stood our ground, and today, we are still fighting and will do so to have freedom without expectation, liberation without exception, joy without exception, and pride without exception. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Going to close this public hearing? Or this public portion? Now, we're on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read through the items in the consent agenda. If, when we're done, if anyone wishes to remove any of them for treatment under new business, they're welcome to. Otherwise, we vote on this as a unit. Item A. Consideration of Approval of First Reading of an Ordinance Authorizing a Lease Agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Item B. Consideration of Approval of First Reading of an Ordinance Authorizing a Lease Agreement with Acme Land Holdings LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. And item C. Consideration of Approval of First Reading of an Ordinance Authorizing a Lease Agreement with Met Billiards LLC at the Metropolitan Theater. So, we're gonna pause for a second, and then we're going to have the clerk call the roll. Oh, we need a first, sorry.
Move to approve.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
All right. And then, if the clerk would please call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. We're on to new business. Item A. Consideration of Approval of First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Article 1618 entitled Vacant Structure Code. Oh. So, we'd ask Ricky Jaeger to step forward. So.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Yeah, sure. So.
Sure.
Vacant Structure Code.
Yes.
Give us some hints.
Sure, absolutely.
I know we've already covered this in Committee of the Whole, but just for people who are here today.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Attorney Ryan Simonton, I think, did a good job providing the overview at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, but really, the impetus is really kind of fourfold. The ordinance amending and reenacting Article 1718 clarifies the intent and findings of the ordinance. It clarifies the inspection process and requires properties that are in compliance with applicable building and zoning codes and life safety codes to obtain a letter of compliance. And that letter of compliance then sets forth two different scales in terms of the annual fee that's going to be assessed on the property. If a letter of compliance is secured by the property owner, they will pay a flat rate of $100. And if that, if they don't secure that because there are property maintenance issues or life safety issues, then they would be on the escalated fee schedule. And as Ryan, as Ryan mentioned in his presentation, the idea being that there's going to be more enforcement, more time spent out in the field, making sure that that property is secure and safe, especially for public officials that have to, you know, enter it if there's an emergency or something along those lines. It also clarifies and appeals the exemption and appeal process. An appeal would be filed for the purpose of claiming a structure is not vacant, a building as defined by the code. And an exemption would be filed for a structure when a property owner agrees the building is vacant, but would like to avoid registering it because the structure cannot be occupied for a certain duration of time. I think that clarifies a lot of the issues we've had in the past with applications being made for that and really kind of sets the expectation of what you're applying for in that. And then, at the end of the day, we're hoping more people will be encouraged to register voluntarily. Our office is, on a regular basis, coming across properties either through code complaints that are being registered online or through our own officers out in the field that properties need to be registered. And for whatever reason, that's not happening. So, hopefully, by giving some certainty and more clarification in the process, we will get more people to self-register their properties.
Great. Is there a motion for this?
Move to approve.
Don't go anywhere.
Second.
Are there questions about this?
He tried to get away. Did you see him try to get away?
You don't have your hook?
Get back.
Director Jaeger always knows that I'm good for a question or two. The registration of the vacant structures, is that publicly available anywhere? If someone says, my neighbor's house has been empty for two years, is it approved by the city or is it registered as a vacant structure? Is there any way, aside from calling your office necessarily, to find that out?
No, there is no online registry. And I believe if somebody calls about that, they'd probably have to submit a FOIA request in order to find out that information. But there is no online documentation of what properties are registered with the city.
Is that? Is that for legal reasons or just?
If I may, we've talked about this before. Advertising which houses are regularly vacant could kind of put them on a map to encourage crime in those locations or encourage vandalism or break-ins. And so, that's historically why that list has not been advertised.
We get a lot of questions. There are probably five houses that I can see from my own home that we know are vacant and have been vacant for quite a while. And either myself or a neighbor has reported those, but there's no real way to know if anything has ever been done about them, because as far as we can tell, there has not.
If I may ask, has, have anybody used the See Click Fix, the online platform? Because if that's, if they are registered through that, it's one of the primary ways to engage with the office, then that's documented that that issue has been resolved. So, whoever is assigned to look at that specific complain or issue should be going back into the system when they're done and giving some determination that it's been closed, it's been determined that it is vacant or it's not vacant. And then, the officer is taking the steps to address it if it is vacant.
These were probably all done prior to the recent rollout of that.
Okay.
So, do you want me to go through and report them all again?
I mean, if you've already reported, then we should have that documented in our office. But yeah, I mean, we can provide some.
Doesn't hurt. Okay. Well, that's what I would do, is do it again, because if we know there's a new system, then that gets it another look, but.
Right. Before, and we still do take hand complaints where people call in and don't use the system. We still obviously honor that process, but, you know, we're trying to move people more to the See Click Fix because it's a way to document and track.
Any other good questions or you're good?
That was my question. The awnings are still falling off of that house.
I'd make another complaint, just to tickle that system. All right. If you would please call the roll.
Yes, Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Next is Consideration of Approval of First Reading of an Ordinance Adopting the Fee Schedule of City of Morgantown.
We had the city attorney sick tonight.
Yes.
And so, he can't be here. And Mr. Kent was called away, and he was going to dress it, so Mr. Jaeger's going to punt for them, if that's okay.
You're back. Ricky Jaeger, part two.
So, again, thank you for letting me address Council regarding this issue. So, during the process and updating the vacant structure code, as well as our process to move to an online permitting system for building permits and land use cases, we, it became apparent that some of our standard business practices were not reflected in the fee schedule. So, what you have before you, and more specifically on page 132 in your packet, are the amendments to the fee schedule based on what's already being done in terms of business practices in the office. More specifically, if you're at one page, 132, rental fees for one or two-family dwellings, multifamily, boarding, or lodging houses and by room have always been assessed as part of the city's rental registration program, but we're not on the fee schedule. I spoke with Attorney Simonton, and he informed me that these fees were once part of the housing code, but when an update was done in 2021, they were removed and they weren't added someplace else. So, that was something that we caught, and we need one to, you know, make it more transparent and upfront that this is what's going on and it'd be available on our website. Also, with respect to plan review fees for accessory structures and driveways, as well as stop work orders and condition of sale inspections, which our team is called to do on occasion. Again, these fees that are listed in your packet have always been assessed, but not on the fee schedule. The only one that was, as an addition, after reviewing all of this and in consultation with our CBO, was adding a new plan review fee for fence permits. And it's in keeping with accessory structures and driveway view permits, and the team having to spend some time looking at that to make sure it meets the proper requirements. So, with that, we'd ask that you consider amending that, the adopting, amending and adopting the new revised fee schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So, who has questions?
So, with the one exception, these aren't actually changing. We're just writing them down so people can know what they are.
Correct. Absolutely. 100%.
All right. I think this calls for the question.
I'm sorry. Does this take into account what our fire marshals do and what have you? This is strictly for?
Yeah, so, as a team, we gathered and looked, and the Fire Marshal's Office looked at the fees that were being assessed and had no changes to their fee schedule. So, the only changes that were documented were in the Development Services Code Enforcement Division side of things, and that's what's reflected in your packet. And I apologize, it wasn't more pronounced or called out. It was just part of the larger fee schedule, so.
Other fee schedules beside the Fire Department, what would they be? Do we do anything for engineering, engineering assessment?
Yeah.
Those fees, and these are not?
Those are on there as well. So, there's three or four pages. After the Development Services Department, there is Fire Marshal or Fire Department fees, and then there are Engineering Department fees. So, if you keep flipping in the packet, they're in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's talk about this overweight truck permit. $5? Does anyone actually apply for that? Silence is enough.
Or enforce?
Yeah.
Probably depends on what roadways they're on.
Right.
Part of the route is on a city roadway, a very small part of city roadway, but it is on city roadway. $5, huh? How long is an overweight truck permit good for?
I'm not as familiar with this particular permit and fee, so I would have to look into that information and get back to Deputy Mayor Trumbull.
Great. What does the form look like?
That one stuck out to me as I was going over the, the things early.
All right. Did you have something good?
No, no, it's good. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that we're being more specific. Cleaning up.
Yes.
What had been taken away is now restored. All right, if you call the roll. Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Item C. Do we have any other Rickys on there? I don't see any.
Go to watch when he tries to run.
Consideration of Approval of the First Reading of an Ordinance Authorizing a Real Estate Purchase Agreement with James L. Lorita, Senior Family Limited Partnership. So, item C, and I guess we are bringing in the airport director.
Good evening, Councilors and Mayor. Nice to see you all tonight. So, the property purchase is approximately 105 acres of land that's directly south of the current Morgantown Municipal Airport runway. This land is, a portion of this land is needed immediately for the runway extension project that we're currently working on. We'll need, actually need it for the next phase. But the additional property is for future use, for future extensions of the runway, future development of airport property, and keeping our airport growing for our community for the foreseeable future.
Is there a motion?
Move to. I'll second this.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone have questions? Or commendations or? I would like to say this is absolutely fabulous news and super appreciate everyone's work on this.
Thank you.
We want to be a forward-thinking city, and this is one really good way to do that.
Yes.
Also, too, if you don't mind, I'd like to express my gratitude for the documentation that we got on this and the thoroughness in which our city attorney presented this information to us. It was well researched and said in a manner that I actually understood what was being said.
Good to hear.
The clerk would please call the roll.
Yes.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're on to, yes, stay right there. Now, we're on to Consideration of Approval of Bid Call 2023-08 TSA Checkpoint Reconfiguration at Morgantown Municipal Airport. I understand there's going to be a reconfiguration going on.
Yes, so, the Transportation Security Administration is replacing their old equipment that we currently use for screening. They have brand-new equipment that's going to be arriving here on July 15th. That new equipment will expedite passenger screening, and if any of you have traveled recently in other airports, you have seen it. One of the, one of the great things about this piece of equipment, other than the images that the screener sees are in color, but it's a 3D manipulation, and you're able to take your laptop through without taking it out of the bag or electronics without taking it out of the bag. So, it's a nice enhancement to what we currently have. The size of the equipment is bigger than the current footprint, so that's why we have to do this reconfiguration. We're going to be moving a couple walls to fit the equipment. And also, while we're doing that, we're looking at making some nice customer improvements as well. One of those improvements is installing a bathroom. We currently, you know, once you go through screening, you have no way to use the restroom before getting on your flight. And our aircraft that currently serve our passengers do not have restrooms onboard. So, instead of folks having to leave the area and come back through screening again. So instead of folks having to leave the area and come back through screening again, we're going to install a restroom that would accommodate folks. The second thing we're doing is we're also adding a new boarding door that is, it'll be kind of in that same location near the restroom. Currently, if you're boarding a flight, you come through security, you go to your right, you sit down, then you're called to board and you've got to cut right across the security line. So instead of crisscrossing passengers and making confusion, we're moving the door over to the right where the passenger is sitting and waiting. So making it much simpler for the boarding process and for the airline to process folks, and for the TSA to process folks that are still coming through.
Great. Your motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Does anyone have any questions regarding the reconfiguration to accommodate the new equipment? Once again, a needed, wonderful improvement, and if nobody has any comments or questions, clerk would please call the roll.
Yes.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. And looks like you're off the hook now.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now we are looking at item E, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a grant for a connector bridge at Eastern Avenue and Flagel Street. And here we're looking at our Assistant City Manager, Poserelli.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, so this is simply a resolution that would allow us to submit an application, this is through the REC Trails Program or RTP Grants. This, similar to TAP Grants, would go in, this is requesting a project of $375,000. These have a 20% city match if awarded and 80% covered by the federal funds. So the resolutions come forth before City Council as, if awarded, it would obligate city funds to do this. This is a project that we have been working with our on-call services on design. It basically uses a paper street or right-of-way between Eastern Avenue and Flagel Street in the 7th Ward. And with the ultimate goal, this would help connect to the newly acquired Eastmans on the NETL property. We worked with them and acquired the ability to put trails on their property, really enhancing the trail access over in that area along Burris Run and West Run. So while we are in the process of putting that design together now with our on-call services, this would allow us to actually move forward with the construction if awarded.
It's a great spot.
Move to approve.
Yes. Thank you. Is there a second?
No second, and I have questions.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm having trouble visualizing where this is.
I can find it on a map, but perhaps Counselor Butcher would be the best.
I can explain it, but Counselor Butcher lives right near there.
Yeah, it's.
It's over a stream that I can't identify.
Yeah, it's a little weird to say it's between Eastern and Flagel Street, but that's really the only way we have of identifying it between two, like, streets. But if you were to go to the end of Eastern, and there's like a stream, so there's some like green space in between there, and then there's like a stream that runs back behind you.
We're trying to get a width of the stream, just give me some idea.
Oh, man.
You could jump across it.
Yeah, like maybe six feet, eight feet.
Yeah, so the stream itself is, it's normal, width is pretty small, but because it is a smaller watershed, it's what they'll call very flashy. So in heavier storms, you can dump a whole lot of rain on that little area very quickly, and so the floodway actually can get quite a bit larger in those areas, so it will be a little bit wider of a crossing.
Essentially a residential area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now this comes my advocacy for point of view. You mentioned bridge, and as much as I appreciate the utilitarianism of a bridge, I would like to see something that's a little more, a little more friendly in terms of community, a little less truck-capable, you know, a little more like a place that you'd like to go and sit by the bridge or have photos taken over the bridge, a little like you see in some of the, you know, some of the Japanese gardens and what have you, or other countries take a little more care rather than just simply, I said, to be so utilitarian. And this seems like appropriate to that?
Yes, I don't believe this bridge crossing, I don't believe it will be vehicle-rated. So in theory, you probably could take a four-wheeler over it if you really wanted to, but I don't believe it would be anything that you would want to take a vehicle on.
Again, I get back to the idea of utilitarian, you know, one of the bane of my discontents is the bridge crossed Walnut Street, for example, to walk through that trough next to a chain link fence.
Yes.
I just would like to see some consideration to the aesthetic.
Yes.
So while I have a chance and before it's committed, I'd like to make that request.
So.
Thank you.
If people are not familiar with the area, you come out Collins Ferry Road and you turn in to the neighborhoods on the right-hand side of the road, and you're before the research ridge development, and you're near Turtle Park, where we were just making a garden this weekend. And the value of this, or the reason that it's so important, is that you have a huge neighborhood of streets and streets and streets and streets, and then you have this small creek that when it's got water in at all, you can't just easily walk across it, you have to have a bridge. And so people have to go around and out to Collins Ferry Road some blocks, and then go down Collins Ferry Road on a fairly narrow sidewalk right next to kind of a busy road to get down to the trail, to get to the new elementary school, the new Suncrest Elementary School. So it, if you could go across this bridge, then people who are trying to get to school, trying to get work at some of the, at Nettle or some of the other facilities that are down Collins Ferry Road, you could cut through and walk through a neighborhood to get out to Collins Ferry and then, and then further down. So it's, it will be, I think, a really nice improvement for Counselor Butcher's neighborhood.
The end of my street, literally.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's been, it's been suggested for years and years and years, so it's really nice that it's finally gotten, gotten to the head of the class, so that it will be looking for funding for it.
Is there trail connection that's planned with this? And that seems like work's already happening, because I see a lot of motors back there?
There will be a connection to something, yeah, to Eastern or Flag, whichever side. Flagel, they'll be, it'll, it'll connect to things on either side of it.
Okay.
So there's a paper street over there.
Mm-hmm.
Your sentiment is not lost, Bill, because a pedestrian or bicycle bridge should look as such, and I will kindly accept your opinion on that as we continue to discuss the bridge in White Park that I am fighting to make sure does not look like an industrial bridge.
Amen.
I'll back you up on this one, you get it.
We, we need to give people a reason to visit these places.
Because it's right, almost adjacent to a park, people will be in that area and would be walking through there and looking at it, and it could be a really nice feature rather than just utilitarian.
No matter what we do, we like to put on our best face.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other? So much appreciated, and if you would call the roll, that'd be great.
Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Hmm, yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. If there isn't a bridge, counselor, there can't be a nice bridge. All right. Oh, this is a very important one. Item E, I mean, pardon me, item F, consideration of approval of a bid award for the new elevator at City Hall.
Those, if the council.
Yes. Pass this over to the manager.
Take this one. As you know, we, the city is, is in the process, major process of renovating City Hall, and the windows are being, I don't know if you've been by there lately, but the exterior windows are being worked on, and it's, it's a massive, it's a massive undertaking. If you haven't had a chance to accompany staff to, just to kind of go and walk around, I think you'll see that it is, it is a huge job, but I think in the end will pay dividends in terms of efficiency and city service, and it's something we'll be proud of. Initially, as part of the initial bid or, or plan, we were not aware that we had to do any major repair on the, on the elevator, but we have found that since, the elevator needs tremendous work, and we certainly feel like it's, it's a critical portion of, in order to get up to the upper stories, including council chambers. We need access to, to the elevator. Our Van Nostrum and architects out of Buchanan were retained to do the architectural services on that building, and they reviewed the bids for modernizing the elevator and are recommending to council that the contract be awarded to the lowest bidder, Schindler Elevator, for the amount of $129,800. And it's staff's recommendation to, to follow that recommendation of our architects and move forward on, on that project as part of the overall renovation of City Hall.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? We get a lot of commentary about functioning really useful elevators, so we want to make sure that we work on that.
This is not one of those single-person scissor elevators. This, this is a functional elevator.
A real one.
Yeah, a real elevator, yes.
People and things.
And this will upgrade our current one?
Yes.
As opposed to replace?
Yes, exactly.
That's essentially the same thing that the library is doing.
We did that, some of that over at the Public Safety Building also.
Yeah. The Public Safety Building?
Elevator.
They're working on it?
Yes. That's part of, that's part of that work, and it's either done or close to being done, yeah.
And if this came as a surprise, what are we not getting now because we have $129,000?
Maybe, maybe you can address that, Emily?
Sure, so you'll recall when we presented the updated plan for the use of the ARPA funds, we set aside some money for some facility projects, and this was included in that. So originally, when the, the work went out for City Hall, we did not include the elevator in that, just with some of the unknowns. And as we got into that project and were able to identify the rest of the, these funds, felt that it was important to go ahead and move forward. There are certain security things with the elevator that with the age of the current elevator that was in City Hall, we were not able to kind of rehab that existing one, kind of some of the computer equipment, but this will allow more controls with floor access, depending on time of day, days of the week, things like that.
As part of the overall improvements to City Hall, though, there's considerable consideration being given to, to security issues. And I don't know if you remember what the old City Hall was like, but it was pretty, pretty open, and we're trying to provide some, a safe environment for both the public and our employees to work in, and part of, part of the renovations to the elevator will help enhance that, not, you can't just, it has some security measures built into it.
And one of the things with this project in particular, that we're trying to make sure, we had the issue with the Public Safety Building. Now granted, it's primarily for internal users or if we were bringing someone into interview, but when that elevator stopped working and was not able to be fixed and was out of commission for over a year. Now granted, some of the COVID delays and some other items like that played a part of that, but, you know, many of our elevators are kind of at an end of life, and so thought this was a good opportunity to, using some of the ARPA funds to supplement this project and be able to move it forward. And then also the work is being done then at the same time that no one is using the building, so that it really doesn't disrupt any accessibility to the public once that building is reopened.
Great. All right. Anything else? We're good? All right. Call the roll.
Okay. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshberger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items to update counsel, and one is that I have requested a report from Chief Powell in terms of the use and utilization of the new training facility that they have. They have completed the review of and are ready to distribute the contracts necessary for entities to come in and utilize the facility. It took major work to get to this point, but we're ready to circulate those among corporate users so that we can increase the revenues. Most of the usage to date, as I understand it, from Chief Powell has been internal, and there's been tremendous use internal of that facility, but as you know, our, our goal is to have a cash flow itself as closely as possible, and that's what the report will, will give us, and I'll forward that to counsel as soon as I, I receive it. The other, I don't know if you've been on, on Main Street lately, I know that we've got some reports of certain activities, but I, because of the efforts of Main Street, Morgantown, and other efforts and efforts by local businesses and buy-in to, to enhancing the vibrancy of the downtown, if you've walked Main Street lately, High Street lately, it's, it's cleaner. We've taken great measures to power wash the sidewalks on a regular basis, in addition to beautification efforts with the flower site. It's a, it's a, it's a really cool thing to drive by down, down High Street and see the ped, peddle being used and activity up there, and people just sitting on the sidewalk and talking, having a place to congregate. So the flowers have been planted, the beautification is ongoing, and in fact, I noticed that several of the large buildings on High Street have started their own power washing, things that needn't be done for a long time, and they've started their own initiatives to power wash it. Frankly, that's what it's going to take, is the city maintaining what, what it, it really needs to take care of, and private enterprise taking care of the buildings and the facilities that they own. And I, I feel that happening after attending Main Street meetings and working with Amy. I think that there's, we have a long ways to go, there's no question about it, but I, with, with the patrols being revved up by the Police Department, I think, and, and the, an additional ambassador for the downtown area, I think it's really making, it's, we're, we're starting to turn the corner. We haven't turned it all the way yet, but I think we're, I feel the momentum building, and so I. And so I feel really good about that. And finally, I certainly, many from you all, but also from the public, uh, some of the concerns about the new trash receptacles and the new, uh, trash program. We are setting up a meeting, the staff is, along with Mr. Simonton, we're, we're setting up a meeting with, with Republic just to see. We certainly don't want to cripple them and don't want to, um, expect anything that's not contractual in nature. But I think there's some things that we can do together to help mitigate some of the problems that we're having, such as the size of dumpster, uh, of the, the containers. We need, we need to really look at that carefully in the process for, for identifying what size container is appropriate for, for different residences. And, uh, and also where they're placed. I mean, some, some of the things we're seeing is that, uh, with, with the high vacancy during, during the summertime of, of certain areas of, of Morgantown, some of those dumpsters that are sitting out there and, you know, and there's nobody living there. And I think we've got, we've got a, I, I think it's been, it's been rolled out. And we've had a couple of weeks under it. And I think it's time just to kind of look at it and see if we can tweak some areas that will not cripple, uh, Republic, but maybe make it easier for them to, to help meet our needs. And that, that's the intent of that meeting. And I'll report, as soon as we have that meeting, I'll report back to council. Um, that's all I have to report, Mayor.
Thank you. I imagine now we're to the city clerk. Yes, city clerk.
Yes. Um, so the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding entry-level police officer exams on June seventeenth, on a Saturday, at nine AM. We are still accepting applications, and I believe we have a little over twenty applications now. Um, so we're hoping for a good turnout. We're still, uh, welcoming applications. So, uh, share the information with your friends and, um, let them know that the information is on our city's website under, um, jobs. And you can search, uh, police officer, entry-level exam, and it should pop up. And all of the information that they need, uh, for the test. And, um, there's a written exam and, uh, an agility. All of that information is on the website. But they can certainly reach out to the clerk's office for any information on that. And then, uh, I just want to say, uh, related to the entry-level exams, um, Zane Breakiron was, uh, a, um, huge part in that process. Uh, when we had our exams, he was there and helped with, uh, transitioning the, the candidates, uh, from their written to their agility and, um, was a good advocate for us, uh, for the Police Department. Um, I know that the candidates, uh, spoke to him, um, and was just a really good resource. Many times when we would look over our applications for police officer, and there's a question on the application that says, "How did you hear about this vacancy?", many times it said Zane Breakiron. So, uh, I just want to say that, um, it's going to be a horrible loss for the department, and my, um, thoughts and prayers are going to their family and to the, the PD family as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
You'd like to start, council?
Okay. To start off, I would also like to express my condolences to Officer Breakiron, um, and to Officer Breakiron's family. And, uh, it's, it's sad when we lose any city employee, and so, um, it's a terrible loss. Transitioning from that, uh, we had a, uh, as, as the mayor alluded to before, a day when we went out to our local park, um, with Bow Park's permission, to, uh, clean up, uh, old, um, kind of overgrown, uh, rain garden in the back there, um, of the park. And I wanted to thank everybody that came out there, including the mayor, to kind of, uh, dig through some, some rocks. Uh, we got like about an inch down in there and realized that this was probably used for fill at one point in time. I found pieces of terracotta pipe down there. Um, so I think, uh, MUB may have used it for fill at one point. So it was, it was a tough job, but, um, with the people we had and the kids, um, that came to, with their like little fairy houses and their little fairy garden in the center there, I think we did a really good job making sure that it looked a lot better than it, definitely than it did, uh, before we started a couple of years ago. We are looking at a dedication ceremony, um, and, uh, Matt Cross is working on that. And so hopefully sometime in July, we can have like a bigger party, um, probably when we get it, um, a little bit more filled in with like things like mulch and stuff like that. We've probably spent, what would you say, Joey, like three, four hours?
Yeah.
Out there? Um, and, uh, I was surprised with what we did get done, but yeah, we'll still, we'll, we'll get it a little bit, um, a little bit more cleaned up and make sure everything's good and watered, and then have like kind of a little party out there. So if anybody'd like to attend, that'd be great. So I have a few events to announce since I'm first, and, uh, everybody hasn't announced them yet. So, uh, on June twentieth, from four to eight PM, there's going to be a fundraiser at the Boston Beanery, uh, for support for, um, the Sizmore family who lost their home in a fire. So please attend i- if you can. Rorick, uh, you know, has done a lot of, for this community. Most people know him through his work with Pantry Plus More, uh, or Pantry Plus. Um, so please come down and support that if, if you're able. That was, um, a, a bad loss for them.
What time is that?
Four to, four PM to eight PM.
The twentieth?
Uh, the twentieth, yes, correct, June twentieth. On June twenty-third, of course, we have the Morgantown Pride Parade at six PM on High Street. That will end, um, at Pleasant Street for a concert directly after. Uh, June twenty-fourth, from noon to five, is the Block Party at Hazel Ruby McQuain Amphitheater. Um, and directly after that is a, uh, uh, garden, I, I think, I think they're calling it the Gay Garden Party at, um, Apothecary directly after that, with, um, some of the profits going to Project Rainbow. And then directly after that ends, there will be another event, Advice. So a lot to go, going on, on the twenty-fourth, a lot of stuff to, to go visit. There's also like Hellbender Fest is going on, um, at Morgantown Brewing Company at that time. We're looking into like having kind of like a little almost punch card that you could take to like one, two, three, um, the Brewing Company and Apothecary and, uh, um, uh, Block Party, and then like having people post it on social media. So if you went on into all of them, went to all those events, you got entered into a raffle just to kind of encourage people to all mingle at the different spaces that we have downtown for that weekend, for Pride Weekend. And then, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, just a couple trail announcements first. The, uh, Monreal Trail Conservancy would like to thank the city for the match on the lighting that will put lights from the Marriott down to the amphitheater. That, that is an exciting project. This summer, probably late summer, there was a grant awarded that will pave a mile and a half in Star City. So it'll take it pretty much from past the Arboretum to where the pavement ends in Star City. And beginning tomorrow, for about a week during business hours, the trail will be closed from the Star City Restrooms moving towards the Arboretum to put in culverts for drainage that is going in in front of the paving project to happen later this summer. Um, so for one week, June seventh, June fourteenth, there will be periods of time during the day when the trail is closed in that area. And there was a MUB meeting today, we had a special meeting. And, um, just trying to think of some of the relevant points to make is, has been in the paper, the Chief View Public Service District, uh, has asked MUB to go into a service and operation agreement. And so it's not a purchase or takeover, it's more a service and operating agreement at this point in time. And I know Kim and Emily have been pulled into these, but with the Westover, um, sewer issue thrasher is doing an engineering study to determine what the needs are there. And that before MUB would consider taking over that, um, sewage, it would, the rate increase would have to be done through Westover before it would come back to MUB and ultimately us. So it would be Westover trying to take care of the issues prior to it coming over. So if there's, there are additional questions, you know, I'm happy to try to answer or, uh, potentially at a future meeting, have some representatives here that could give us a brief update if that was, if there's interest in that. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you for, for providing that so that we have that liaison thing going back and forth with, actually both Rail Trail and, um, MUB.
Yes.
Trash, yes. I have been receiving a lot of trash complaints again. I'm sure we've all heard complaints about the bins. I think that that's probably, um, more difficult to deal with because we, we kind of knew what we were getting when those were, um, when the contract was signed. However, I have heard a lot of, and reported a lot of complaints about missed pickups and early neighborhood pickups. And, um, I've reported those to Carol, and she has put me in touch with some of the Republic, uh, representatives who are, are taking care of that. But I would like to remind everyone in administration that when we were renegotiating the contract, we had a commitment that we would be implementing those fines that are written out in the contract. And at least on my part, I'm happy to give you video every time they're through my neighborhood at five thirty AM. I have it. I have still been receiving a decent amount of traffic and parking complaints in Woodburn. I've been trying to get with the engineering guys about those. And either our schedules don't line up or I don't get a response. So I will be following up on those again this week and likely including Kim or Emily on those correspondences to try to get some movement on those things because there's, there's some real concerns, um, in multiple spots in Woodburn. I have a lot of events on the calendar, June is very busy. I will stick to only events between now and our next meeting because we can all go much further than that. I am supposed to be hosting with Main Street, but I think it's mostly me at this point. Um, a cleanup of the riverfront in Hazel Ruby McQuain Park on Thursday this week at three thirty. We recently did some invasive species removal along the riverbank there, and there's just tons of trash left behind, decades of trash buildup. So we're going to try to get that cleaned up, at least around the park there, and get it looking its best for all of the summer events coming up. On Saturday, the tenth, Woodburn is having its rescheduled Adopt a Street cleanup at ten AM in Whitmore Park. There's also an arts walk that day and the Moonlight Market downtown. On the thirteenth, that's a Tuesday, at lunchtime, Main Street is hosting a pop-up plaza on the Courthouse Square. There will be, um, coffee available, yard games. They did one, um, last month, and it was really great. So I hope more people will come out for that. Bow Park has a Sounds of Summer concert in Kreps Park. On the fourteenth, there's also a Main Street Cruze-In the evening of the fourteenth in downtown. Greenmont is hosting a neighborhood cleanup on the Saturday, the seventeenth, which is also the West Virginia Birthday Party Day downtown. And there are lots of other events going on that day. I know Apothecary's doing their own kind of West Virginia birthday celebration, so keep an eye out for that. And last but certainly not least, Morgantown Community Resources, um, Hazel's House of Hope, is doing a community open house on the twentieth. I didn't, I think it's a Tuesday, yes. Tuesday, June twentieth, from ten AM to two PM. All of the organizations will have their spaces open, be giving tours. They will have tables set up, we will have refreshments, things like that. But for anyone who has been interested in seeing some of the changes up there and some of the work that's being done, we would like to welcome you, the twentieth, from ten to two.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's me.
Nope, nope.
I'm taking notes.
Get it, get it, get those notes down.
Making sure they're on my calendar.
Yes.
I'd be curious to see what's happening up there.
Yeah. I noticed a sign.
Very good.
It's probably been up there for months, right?
Couple of things. Uh, I too have, uh, you know, heard complaints about the trash and trash bins. And, uh, I am very sympathetic to the position the city's taking. And I am, uh, not unimpressed with, with what the Republic's done and is doing. I think they're making an effort, I appreciate that. I think, uh, this solution was, uh, these broad bins, solved a ma- great many problems while creating a great many more. The one thing that I would ask and suggest is that, um, I find that since we seem to be providing the trash bins now and not having people buy their own and put them out, that there doesn't seem to be a good relationship between the, the bin and, and the person who possesses it. In other words, these bins were dropped off, kind of helter-selter in front of houses. And I think, uh, one house ended up with like two when there was only one person there. And I, we've had in front of empty lots, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you're aware of that. The difficulty I find too, though, is that, uh, we don't seem to have an inventory of even the recycle bins. I know that there's one rental near, in my area that, that has, uh, four recycle bins in front of it and no trash cans. And I think the recycle bins are being used for trash. Somehow it seems to me that if we're going to provide these bins, that we should have some sort of idea of who we're giving them to, and we should be able to control them in some manner.
They're numbered. It's possible.
I haven't seen numbers on mine.
I think there's a number.
Well, be interesting. I'll go look too. In any case, it would be nice to see that, uh, if we could somehow bring this into a controllable situation.
The new ones, the new ones, I believe, are numbered. I don't know the old ones.
Okay.
Especially on Willie Street. I almost ran over a postman who had to walk into the street around the bins because the sidewalk's not wide enough and they're all just sitting there.
Yeah, well, Willie Street is a problem for sure. Even before the big bins.
Even before the big bins.
It's obviously a, a difficult situation. I hate to put that on, on administration, but it's, uh, unfortunately falling to, uh, falling to our responsibility to somehow come to some sort of solution with the appropriate people, with the repo, with the appropriate responsibilities. Other than that, uh, I've been to a couple, uh, neighborhood meetings, and I'm happy to say that the neighborhood associations are up and running. They're planning their, uh, their block parties. I, I know that, uh, Dave, that, uh, Greenmont is planning one for the end of this month, June twenty-fourth. And also, uh, that, uh, Span is, uh, having, uh, yoga, yoga, yogi. Yoga, thank you, in the park, up at, uh, the Eaton Park on the corner of Spruce or Park and Morris on, on Saturdays. So it's good to see. So it's good to see that kind of activity, it's good to see that kind of community commitment. We've even got communities volunteering for not only cleanup, but also to do some maintenance on some of the public properties that we have too. So I encourage that, and I'm very much, I'm happy to see this kind of activity, even with the Main Street people taking care of their own buildings and pitching in to help us out, and not just simply assuming that that's the city's responsibility or the city will take care of it. It's nice to see that happen. That kind of concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Wagon.
Not to keep banging the same drum, but as it relates to Republic, I also have received a lot of concerns as it relates to the size of the garbage tote. I actually went back and watched the old video where we interviewed, and one of the questions that was asked is, is there a possibility that someone who requests a smaller receptacle could have that? And the response given, and I quote, was, "The best way is we have a lot of accommodations for a number of residents throughout the city." So that was a promise that we were given. I hope that Republic will uphold their end of that statement, especially since I have residents that are over 65 and have requested smaller totes and have not received them, and it was an accommodation that they had some foresight knowing it would be coming. I was also disappointed when I called about it because my wife is too short to move the garbage bin, and in return, they asked for a doctor's note for her garbage tote, and then sent me a letter for me to provide them medical reasoning, which I'm not quite sure where Republic's business is, our doctor being involved. So I was really disappointed by that to the nth degree. On a lighter note, loved Friday at the concert series, thought it was fantastic. Second time I got to see the Philadelphia Freedom, they were awesome. Neighbors loved it. Speaking of neighbors, we have our neighborhood yard sale on June 17th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you go on our neighborhood page and you wish to be a part of the First Ward Yard Sale, you can list your address, which will then be added to a Google map, so the day of the yard sale, people can find your home to come and see all the treasures you have for sale. And our next neighborhood meeting is June 26th at Jack Roberts Park at 6:00 p.m. on the Monday. And welcome to summer vacation to all of the high school, middle school, elementary school, students, teachers, and to a lesser extent, parents, although it kind of changes theirs. And that is my report.
So Suncrest Neighborhood has been busy, so I too enjoyed over in the Seventh Ward at either Suncrest Mini Park or Turtle Park, depending upon who's asking or who's saying. But over at this park, the kids had an idea that they wanted to have a fairy garden, so the center of this big circular garden, that is a replanting of a much older garden that had gotten completely out of control, but in the center are these fairy houses, so the adults put down some, probably there was one or two kids helping, but some of them were over on the play equipment, which I thought was good too, but they put down some landscape paper and then put down some mulch, and then put down these fairy houses and these painted stones all over the surface, and then they took rocks from on-site and made a circle around the kind of fairy area, and then there are some paths that are, that have curves in them, radiating out, and then sections of garden, and one woman had started from seed milkweed plants, so, and lots and lots of other native species or close, close to native species, and the Neighbor Association and the city and Bow Park did not need to fund this because people dug things out of their own gardens, and I think a few people bought something and donated it, but it was mostly sharing of neighbors of what was in their yard for this nice fairy garden. So it looks gorgeous, we just need to figure out different ways to water it, so I think we're going to have a watering, watering event this evening, after the council meeting, unless somebody else has already done it?
My wife went and did it.
Ah, all right. Thank you to his wife, because it definitely needed watering, so she's lovely. So anyway, that was great. I use a shovel a lot in my yard, I really like to garden, and this is the first time ever that I got to borrow somebody's pickaxe and get some of the stone out to put, I never dug out so much stone to plant a flower, but it had, it has grown flowers before, so there must be some good nutrition in between those little tiny stones. But it was really neat because it was all ages, I think we had every decade represented, so it was, plus many more and lots of kids. So that was great. Then also, the area right behind, the area of Suncrest right behind Kreps Park had a, over Memorial Day weekend, had a picnic, that one of the women from the neighborhood got permission to shut down the street, so I guess we had a block party. And it was wonderful, and lots and lots and lots of people, I think it's the second or third year, but lots and lots of people, and it was, they had just about anything you can imagine for games and things to eat, it was really nice. So I just really am up on these neighborhood events because it really make people really enjoy having some social time and enjoying their neighborhood. I appreciate the new toters, and I also see lots of complaints, so whatever we can do, I know that at this point, if you are a senior citizen, you definitely do not need the doctor's note, and I think we need to just, whenever it's appropriate, people should have the appropriate sized toter, so whatever we can do to effectuate that, it's very, very important, and then some streets, I think, have not yet received their toter, so they need to make sure they call that in. I think we can start working toward ending this meeting, so is there anyone who would like to?
Do you want to adjourn?
Second. Perfect. Ad adjourn.